Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll so that we might establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Shanier.
Still here.
Councilmember Ashby.
Councilmember Warren.
Councilmember Harris.
Councilmember Hanson.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Thank you. We do have a quorum. I'd like everyone to rise, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the public. Thank you for being here tonight. We do have one major discussion item on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund framework, but before that, we do have a consent calendar with a number of items. Do any members want to ask that any items be taken off the consent calendar or be considered separately?
I'll move consent.
Mr. Mayor, may I read into the record? We'd like to pull item number eight, not be voted on this evening.
Okay. Okay. So item eight is off, but the rest of the agenda has been moved by Councilmember Guerra.
Concur.
Seconded by Councilmember Carr. So we do have public testimony on one or several items. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Hanson, and then we'll vote. No, no, let's go with the public testimony first.
I have three speakers on the consent calendar. The first is Robert Copeland on item number one, then Daphne Harris on item number 11, and then Susan Torres on item 11.
I hope the city council obeys their own rules when it comes to how they treat the public. I mean, talking to each other, whispering to each other, that's not public decorum, in my opinion. I mean, I hope you don't break your own rules. If we have to follow the rules, so should the city council. I've seen people doing paperwork during a city council meeting. They're not listening if they're doing their own paperwork. The city council does not deserve... They should follow their own rules, as we should follow the rules also that you set. But you've got to do your share. And if you don't follow the rules, we're going to call you out on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daphne Harris on item 11.
Good afternoon, City Council. Mayor, all those who are present. One of the concerns I have, I understand the need for removal and replacement of trees. I want to understand that the boundaries that are being set on Metta View are not going to infringe or cause any restrictions on the ability for the road of 24th Street to go from Metta View to Consonnet. So I wanted to get some clarification on whether or not the border of trees that we're planning on putting on Metta View are going to interfere with anything of that nature. So I want to raise the point that there's a lot of movement on what we're going to do with 2812 Metta View Road. I am approaching the council with an alternative suggestion on what they should do, which would be a best use for that location. And I just want to make sure that these tree boundaries are not going to cause any issue with that.
Mayor?
Yes. Councilman Carr?
There are a couple of things, Ms. Harris, a couple of things going on with Metta View Road. One is a complete redo of Metta View from just west of 24th Street down to Detroit Boulevard.
Understood.
That's going to include redoing the pavement, putting up monument signage, removing some dead trees, and planting new trees. The trees that are being planted exceed the number that are coming down.
Correct.
Plus, the circumference, the diameter of the trunks exceed what's coming out.
Correct.
The project that goes on 24th Street from Metta View down to Delta Shores has been designed, but we haven't been able to locate the money for it at this point. Once we do, we will implement that design and have all of the community outreach.
What is the money necessary in order to make that happen?
I can't hear.
What is the amount of money necessary to make 24th Street to connect to Delta Shores? What is the budget for that?
Well, we have a meeting set up, or we're setting up a meeting.
You brought it here, so I just wanted to know if you knew the value of that.
I had to take some time off. My wife had some surgery. I have to take care of her. But we're setting up a meeting where we can answer all of your questions at one time.
Okay.
Okay.
And I understand the need for the improvement, because we have the improvement down on the Mac Road end, and I understand the expansion of all of the bike rails and all of that. When we use the word "walkable," I want to understand what that means in the council's terminology.
We'll have the right people in the room be able to answer all of your questions at one time.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Our final speaker on the consent calendar is Susan Torres, also on item 11.
Torres.
Actually, Madam Clerk, that's on number 17, not 11. Perhaps my writing is not that clear.
Thank you on item 17.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm really for SHRA going for these loans and grants. I retired from SHRA after serving with them for 27 years in the Housing Choice Voucher Department. So I know the hard work that they do and the struggles sometimes with the sometimes conflicting rules and regulations that they have to follow, you know, with the federal and local laws and so on. I just ask that any funds that they get goes towards affordable housing, which we need a lot more of in all areas. And I really ask all of the different districts that are represented here today to please work closely together. So often in the news, we hear that, you know, people are saying, well, not in my backyard, not here, don't build it here. We need affordable housing. We need it now. If we're building places, please let's make sure that more of the units that are finally built... For example, if you're building 200 new units, don't leave just 30% of them where low and moderate income people can use them. Make them more, maybe 70% where low and moderate income people can use them, because we never know whose budget or whose job is going to go next, and we may be in that same boat. So I'm for SHRA going forward with getting these, and hopefully that you guys can support them and get them going. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service and for coming tonight. That is the consent calendar. Public testimony, Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give a special thank you to our parking staff. And I see Matt Ironman here, but Stacy Overmail, Erica Galang, and Paul Sheridan for working with our Southside Park Neighborhood Association on adjusting the restrictions we'd put in place in anticipation of the Golden One Center. There was a popular demand that parking restrictions in neighborhoods be increased to 10:00 p.m. As we've studied the impacts, we were able to, in Southside Park, roll that back to 8:00 p.m. with working with the neighborhood. But it was our parking staff who are doing all sorts of Herculean things. They prioritize this, and I just want to give them a special thank you on behalf of the neighborhood and on behalf of my office.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. It's a really important acknowledgement. We have a city staff that works really hard out there, does a lot of great work unsung times. We appreciate you, even if we don't always express it in every moment, but we do. So, the consent calendar, Adam absent item what?
Eight.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The consent calendar passes. So we now move to our one discussion item for action this evening. And this is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund framework. And even though I am the presenter here, because this is under the guise of a mayoral letter, the truth of the matter is that this work product that we're bringing forward has been a real collaborative effort with not only the community, which you will hear from today, and thank you Kathy Cresswell, Kathy Cresswell and the Housing Alliance, and all of the stakeholders who have participated in leading this effort, but also our city staff on the city management side. Danielle Foster is here, our new housing director, and of course, SHRA, our housing authority. This has been a real collaborative approach, and Julia Burrows as well, on my staff, who's helped lead the effort, as well as Matt Reed from Steve Hanson's office. So thank you to all of you right off the top. So I'm going to present, but I'll do it from here, as opposed to, you know, being accorded two minutes over there. I'll try to make it brief. I don't think I need to cite the statistics that speak very clearly to our housing crisis in Sacramento, especially our affordable housing crisis. And as I said a few moments ago, our single biggest impediment to becoming everything we want to be as a city is affordable housing and homelessness. Now, there's more, of course. There's the broader category of inclusive economic development, inclusion, and the quality of life in all our communities, and our investments in youth and everything. But really, affordable housing and homelessness have become such a major set of issues in our community for good reason. And it's not just our community, it's the entire state of California. And the state is stepping up in unprecedented ways in terms of resources, also in terms of public policy, and we must do the same. It was one of the reasons why I suggested to the city council and the community that we extend the Measure U sales tax from a half cent to one cent. And even though it was a general tax, and we couldn't commit it, and we all know that that's been an interesting exercise to get to a community consensus and a council consensus about how we invest that second half cent, including on essential city services, that one of the motivations for Measure U in the first place was to create an affordable housing program in Sacramento, and specifically the capital to be able to partner with the private sector, for-profit and nonprofit sectors, to be able to provide the gap financing and the other housing strategies to be able to house more people. You know, the single best prevention, the single best homelessness prevention strategy in Sacramento and California is to build more affordable housing and create more affordable housing. And so while we work mightily with our housing authority and with our city staff to address the homeless crisis, we have to be equally or even more focused on doing everything we can to prevent people of low and moderate income from ever becoming homeless. So what we have done here is what we suggest, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hanson to help round this out. He, of course, deserves enormous thanks and credit, as do all my colleagues, for helping take my rough concept from Measure U and my various speeches and this idea, and actually describing how a catalytic housing trust fund might work, and suggesting an aggressive but reasonable number that we could aspire to, and gaining unanimous support, I believe, from the city council back in 2019. So thank you again very much for that. So we've been working since that time, last budget, to actually suggest what this might look like. And the paper you have in front of you describes it. Here's the bottom line. I'll go just do the highlights. 80% of the money would be spent on housing for low and very low-income people. 40% for extremely low income. I think I might have missed one category there, but I'm getting it. Taking my cues from Kathy out there. 40% for extremely low income. And these are folks who are maybe housed now, may not be housed. But a family of six, I believe, the adjusted gross income to qualify would be $34,000 or less. And of course, less income for smaller families. So imagine what it's like as a family of six to live on $34,000, $35,000 per year. We want to suggest 40% of this fund be directed towards helping our residents most in need. Now, the $50 million and the $100 million that we suggest here in this concept paper is not the only resource on the table, because once the city puts real skin in the game, we then have much greater eligibility for state and federal funds in addition to drawing significant private sector dollars. And I can't reveal this tonight, but in the coming weeks, I hope to have some major announcements about some private sector partners that want to, in essence, match or come close to matching what we're going to do, because they see if we're in it, they're in it, they know they have partners, and we can do more together than we can do alone. The idea here would be to work with the city treasurer and our city management staff to ensure that we pass the so-called stress test, to ensure that we can make the debt payment for the housing bond, to create $100 million, which, again, I believe we can catalyze to double over time, whether it's $150 or $200 million in total. We would use for gap financing and for other innovative housing strategies that will allow more housing production to take place. There is an emphasis in our paper here around innovation. And you've heard me till you're probably tired of hearing me on this. We have a math problem in Sacramento and California. And the math problem is that, for a variety of reasons, if it costs, and it does, $300,000 to $400,000 a public subsidy to build a single unit of affordable or permanent supportive housing, we cannot create the volume that is necessary to meet our regional housing allocation, and more importantly, the human need is out there. So we must, must, must use as much of this resource as possible to spark innovation in the housing industry, whether it's efficiency housing, cargo units, pallet homes, cabin communities. We've seen a zillion models, but none of them have gone to scale. What's it going to take to help spark a housing revolution in Sacramento that ensures that more people are housed in smaller, easier to build, faster to build, but quality housing? So we suggest that 30% of the money be set aside for subsidy of no more than $100,000 in total for these kinds of units. And by the way, the percentages, as Councilmember Hanson and I have talked about, I've talked to some of you, are flexible. There's not a rigidity here. But I don't want to say up to 30%, just to anticipate potential argument, because I want to send a signal here that we're serious about this, and I don't want to let us off the hook collectively in terms of trying to get more bang for our collective buck and be able to house more people. But we will always be flexible based upon the demand and the market. That's the program here. And there's a lot more detail about how this would exactly work. Of course, we're working with Bond Council, our city attorney's office, the lawyers and experts from some of our other potential partners. The last thing I will say is that the Measure U portal is open now. And because it's open now, we are already beginning to receive some interest, and I'm told some applications for housing projects. This is important, and we encourage it, because it may take a number of months to actually perfect the housing bond. By the time we perfect it, let's say it's the late spring, early summer, for the sake of discussion, we want projects to already be in the pipeline that have been vetted, that are eligible, and that may actually be entitled, so that we can begin producing and not have to wait until after the bond is actually issued. So please submit your best ideas and specific projects through the Measure U portal now. Let me turn it over for any opening comments. Do you want to wait for the public testimony? Why don't you go ahead, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also happy to wait, but I just wanted to say first, thank you. This initiative emanates out of years of work on projects that were affordable housing projects. We just can get moving. And we realized after we lost our redevelopment money related to affordable housing, which, again, wasn't the legislature that did that, that was the cities in a lawsuit, that we could no longer have the resources we need to provide money for these projects. And your bold vision to increase Measure U gave us a chance, not only to invest in disadvantaged communities, but to have an extra resource that we could leverage in order to help finance affordable housing construction. And I want to thank you for that. When Mr. Jennings and Guerra and I brought forward some ideas around housing in the fall of 2018, this was the one that I cared about the most, really creating a fund, a catalytic fund, to build affordable housing. And when we sat with the people working on this issue, not only our own staff, but the housing community, and I know Kathy is here, Bill is here, the affordable housing developers, as you looked around that room, they all said the same thing, that we needed a source of local match to pull down state money. We needed predictability in what would be available, and when it's available, and for what it's available, so that they could bring projects to the table to take advantage of that. There are literally hundreds, if not thousands, of units of opportunity waiting for us to make this decision. And just like there are hundreds, maybe thousands, of units waiting to be built, there are tens of thousands of families in our region, but especially here in our city, that want relief from increasing rents, that want stability to know that they won't have to pay more than a third of their income in rent, which is the classic threshold for whether it's a burden or not. And so this is really our chance as a council to put our money where our mouths are when it comes to building housing that's not just affordable, but is protected affordable housing for a long time. And really, the projects that we're talking about often take blighted lots, lots that have been empty for a long time, and out of them sprouts a new community that is integral to supporting their neighbors, that is integral to creating a better life for our citizens. And I think that every piece of that is good for our city and good for our community. So Mayor, I want to thank you. Howard, thank you for working with us to implement the budget with this piece, along with our city treasurer. I know that we have a window of opportunity now, and that portal that the mayor talked about with the Measure U program is a window of opportunity for people to look into. And my message to the affordable housing community right now is, let's not waste any time. Let's identify our projects. Let's line up. And if we can get this money deployed, chances are the community will support another round of funding as quickly as we can show that it was worth every cent. And so this is a great day. It's a big day, and it's something that is long overdue.
Thank you again. Let's go through the council here, and then we'll do it a little reverse or do the public testimony. Is that okay? Councilman Guerra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only, first, I wanted to thank you and Councilmember Hanson for bringing this up. I think when Councilmember Hanson, Jennings, and I got together a year ago, Councilmember Hanson brought together this idea of the catalytic housing trust fund, and he's continued to try to send a signal of how we need to address this gap financing. So I want to thank both of you for putting this together. The one I also want to highlight and thank you for including in there, looking at our major corridors. Obviously, our regional partners are looking at, how do we look at all our regional corridors throughout the region to make sure that we are looking at infill in those areas that need it? You know, Franklin Boulevard, Stockton Boulevard, those areas. Making sure that our selection process, as we move forward, is taking advantage of some of the underutilized land in areas where we need housing. Second, I just had one question I wanted to make sure that got answered, and I think your staff had brought it up. On, one, I think the efficiency housing issue is critical. I know Councilmember Harris and I have gone to C Factory OS and looked at modular housing, and there are other folks out there who are doing it. But the only question I had is, we want to make sure that this housing, these housing units also have some longevity in there and quality. And is that the case? I wanted to make sure that when we're using our dollars, that that's kind of the...
Yeah, I mean, look, when we talk about efficiency housing, it's an opportunity to... We're not talking about shacks here, or we're not talking about disposable units that can be used for a year in the run away. Obviously, we want to have the right kinds of covenants that... Obviously, we want to have the right kinds of covenants that ensure affordability for the long term, and, and everything must be quality. It's just that we, we know, because we've seen it here at City Hall, that there are quality products here that have not gone to scale for a variety of reasons. Some of it is our regulatory system, but at the state and the local level here.
I'm glad you hit that softball pretty, pretty hard.
I hit it hard, but no, we're talking quality.
I wanted to make sure that that was the case, that, that we, that I think there's innovation that we must take advantage of, but we also don't affect the quality. That's all I'll say, all I'll say for right now, I just think that the urgency is, is needed, and then I'll wait to hear for the public comment, but I think those two things were critical. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Geta. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I am very optimistic about the idea of having dedicated resources for housing. I think we all recognize that that's a major issue for, you know, across the spectrum, basically, affordable, homeless housing, young professional housing. And so I think regulatory, there's still some more work that needs to be done. But also, I just want to encourage you, Mr. Mayor, and your leadership to really think about, you know, a variety of housing types until we lock into something that we know is efficient and that really works to help us solve these issues. We need to be open to different ideas. And, and in my own capacity, I've met with a number of architects and people who have come up with ideas that they want to test out, and they think that it could help solve our problems. And, and, and I just want the council to be open to some of these because I think in order for us to make a big dent in the housing issue, we have to find something that we have not done that works for people and help to make this housing issue affordable. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman... Twice. Okay. Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to sort of build upon what Alan Warren and Eric Gara have said, my colleagues, you know, Alan and I are both builders. Alan's a developer, I'm a builder. We really do need to look at lowering the cost of housing, to stretch these dollars. You know, it's going to be a reach for us to, to get to the bond. We have to make the very best use of it that we can. Over the years, we've brought, we've brought proposals forward like micro pads, like modular housing from Factory OS. The building industry is going to change remarkably, I think, in the next couple of years. And so, yes, we have to work on the regulatory piece, but we need to get more units per dollar than we do currently. It's a problem because right now, materials and labor are at an all-time high. Never been higher to get a project to cross the finish line. So necessarily, we need, we need to do affordable by design, but also by construction type. So I just wanted to put my plug in for that as well.
Thank you. Let us hear from the public here, and then we can get back to the city council. Go ahead.
I have nine speakers on this item. The first is Kathy Cresswell, then Mallory Spilker, then Chrizanne Giles.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. Sacramento, on behalf of the Sacramento Housing Alliance, I am very pleased to urge your support for the adoption of the Sacramento Affordable Housing Trust Fund Framework. We, we've been very pleased to be able to work with the mayor and Councilman Hanson on the proposal, and have appreciated that a lot of the input that, that our organization and the affordable housing developers that we represent were incorporated into the, the draft. And we are particularly pleased about the targeting of income for our most vulnerable households, so that eighty percent of the resources will go to house families at extremely low income and very low income. And, and that is the, the segment of the population who, who the market does not reach. And so, targeting, it is really important that you've targeted those resources. It will help us end the tragedy of homelessness, as well as ensure that everybody in the community has a safe and affordable place to call home. The other reason it's really important to get this bond, and we urge you to move with posthaste immediately to get the bond issued, we need the money, and in part because we have billions of dollars at the state that, as Councilman Hanson mentioned, we have to be able to compete for, and we need local funds for leverage. So the sooner we can get those funds, the sooner we're going to be able to ensure that we can capitalize our investments to get more resources, to get that critically needed housing done now. So we appreciate your leadership on the issue. We also appreciate the, your willingness to let us continue to work with you as you flesh the details out of this very progressive proposal. So we urge your support, and thank you for your leadership.
Next speaker is Mallory Spilker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Mallory Spilker, Vice President of Public Affairs with the California Apartment Association. Our association represents Sacramento housing providers who account for over forty thousand market rate in affordable rental housing units in the city alone. Our association acknowledges and understands the critical housing shortage facing our state and our city. There is no dispute over the fact that our city needs to produce more housing for residents of all income levels. We especially need to focus on affordable housing production in, in order to protect our most vulnerable residents in this community, and work to create permanent housing opportunities for individuals currently experiencing homelessness. The creation of the Sacramento Affordable Housing Trust Fund would assist the city with obtaining much-needed state funding for affordable housing production, and serve as a significant step in the right direction toward actually getting low-income units built. Our association supports this proposal and is pleased to see innovative and efficient affordable housing solutions gaining traction in the city. Thank you for bringing this item forth today, and I look forward to continuing to work with the city to explore reasonable solutions to our community's housing challenges.
Thanks, Mallory.
Next speaker is Chrizanne Giles, Giles, and then Amy Miller.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment on the Sacramento Affordable Housing Trust Front Framework, that's a mouthful, before you this evening for consideration. We agree that housing is both a challenge and an opportunity in Sacramento. The construction of new residential projects are still extremely challenging to get off the ground. We have rising costs and increased regulatory mandates to continue, that continue to impact new project submittals. The creativity to include efficiency housing, talking about micro units, being open to modular housing and shared common space housing in the built environment to allow more secondary units or granny flats, we believe is critical to increase the amount of affordable housing in the city of Sacramento. These types of housing can be much more challenging to finance and have higher costs associated with their construction. And so we strongly feel that the adoption of the Sacramento Affordable Housing Trust Fund Framework is a bold and important step to secure millions of dollars in gap financing and catalyze an efficiency, efficiency housing market in Sacramento. We thank you all.
Thank you, Chrizanne. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Amy Miller, then Sue Reynolds, then Robert Copeland.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Amy. I'm a new resident here of District Four, and I'd like to speak tonight about something that seems obvious to me, but I haven't really heard spoken about tonight, and that is that affordable housing is multi-unit housing. However, one of the biggest barriers to that is the predominance of single-family zoning in the city. My husband is actually a contractor, and we would like to build affordable housing, small A, affordable, using SIPs, construction, structural insulated panels. We've been looking for some vacant lots in the city, but have been finding it extremely challenging to find a vacant lot since we don't want to displace anybody. It's actually zoned for multifamily. We're looking on the city, excuse me, the county's tax sale, that's online right now, and found a big vacant lot off Fairfield Street, Noralto. Property right to the north is a large apartment building. Property right to the south is a large apartment building. But this area is zoned for single-family. It's just ridiculous. So I would recommend that the City Planning Commission would do a study looking at where land use in the city already is multifamily, but the underlying zoning is for single-family. I think doing that, doing a corrective zoning, would allow more units, more housing to get on the market. It would reduce costs without any public subsidies. So thank you for consideration.
Amy, before you walk away, Mayor, if you don't mind. We've worked a lot on upzoning of a lot of our city, and we've got a few people here who I'd like you to connect with. Leslie Fritsch from our Economic Development Department, or Christine Whitekirt from SHRA. They know a lot about the lots. And then Danielle Foster or Matt Hurdle, they're working in our housing department and could help you on the policy questions, because I'm curious to know their answers to your, your questions, because we want to see what you're building as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also, if you can either coordinate with my council office or Councilmember Shanier's office, we already did a vacant lot study in most of Stockton Boulevard, at least in that area. Any of the C-two zoning allows for up to seventy-six feet, I believe, of multifamily housing. So that C-two zoning has a lot of flexibility as well. Hundred vacant lots.
And if you're interested in developing in District Eight, regardless of the zone...
There you go. I love it.
Regardless of what is currently zoned, come to my office, we will work it out.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you. Welcome to Sacramento.
Next speaker is Sue Reynolds and Robert Copeland.
Good evening. I think we're all here because we know that opportunity begins with a stable home. I'm Sue Reynolds. I'm the head of Community Housing Works, or the nonprofit developer who's taken on that challenge for the lumberjack site, which has received your support as part of our thirty years' worth of bringing that opportunity to people through stable homes. So when you're talking about a home, you're not simply talking about reducing homelessness and reducing economic stress. We're talking about school outcomes, health without asthma, and economic opportunity that comes when you're not paying seventy percent of your income every month for apartments. So we welcome the innovation that's here in this proposal, and we ask for your support for the framework. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Copeland, then Keith Blum, then Noah Painter, then Mediah Stewart.
Hi, Robert.
Hi. I was on eighty-six line a while ago. There's a lot of vacant lots on the eighty-six bus route, which I believe goes through Del Paso Heights area, going towards Grand High. And as far as, this is a regional problem, not a city problem. So I think you should also contact counterparts in the city councils of Elk Grove, Citrus Heights, Ranch Cordova, Elk Grove, Folsom, and the County Board of Supervisors. How many vacant apartment complexes and houses are in county, in the region, and see what, if we can renovate those to, so we can rent them out? And how many units are we talking about in this housing trust fund? Because we need tens of thousands of affordable housing units in Sacramento. I hope you know that. And as far as that, have you ever heard Article Thirty-Four of the California Constitution? I think each one of you should look at that and see what we can do to repeal that? By a ballot measure? Because it was set up by a ballot measure?
It's on the November ballot.
Thank you. Because I, because I want that ballot measure, I want that article repealed. I think that's a highly racist about, article that was passed before I was born. I think nineteen fifty was passed by the voters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Keith Blum, then Noah Painter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Keith Blum with Mutual Housing California. Mutual housing is very much, obviously, in support of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund program. It creates a tremendous opportunity for not only mutual housing, as an affordable housing developer, but many other affordable housing developers here in the community who are chomping at the bit to help the city develop as much affordable housing as quickly as possible. We look forward to working, continue to work with, with you, the council, as well as city staff and SHRA staff to implement this program and build some affordable housing as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you for all your work. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Noah Painter. And then the final speaker on this item is Mediah Stewart.
Mayor, council, Noah Painter. I'm partner with KMP Strategies. We serve as an advisory role and consultants to affordable housing developers and public agencies here in Sacramento. I've worked on numerous affordable housing projects, including some of the work that Governor Newsom has worked on, looking at state surplus land within the downtown area. This proposal is something that is sorely, sorely needed. We needed a new funding source for many years, so I want to commend you, Mayor, and Councilmember Hanson, on your work on this. One caution is, when looking at taxable bonds versus tax-exempt debt, just caution on erring on the side of tax-exempt debt as much as possible. It's a lot more flexible. Taxable bonds, it just becomes a lot harder to use. And echoing Kathy's comments on essentially trying to get the money out as quickly as possible, things have become competitive at the state level for federal low-income housing tax credits and state housing tax credits, as well as the bonds now. We were recently awarded, on a project that we were working on, some state tax credits as well as federal low-income housing tax credits, and are working through the bond situation right now. But any funding source needed for gap would be much, much rewarded and sorely needed for projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Noah.
Final speaker is Mediah Stewart.
I'm Mediah Stewart. This is my husband, Jeff Stewart. And I had, just going to read a quick statement to you guys. We represent Blessings Care. We operate congregate care, room and board facilities, and we provide quality housing, food, transportation, medical appointments to adults with mental health and physical disabilities. Our unique population consists of homeless persons, indigenous, individuals on fixed income, veterans, and anyone seeking to improve their life. We operate in these underserved and underrepresented communities plagued by blight and crime. Our operation helps to reduce social, racial, health, and economic disparities. Housing and feeding homeless and low-income persons, we hire from within these communities. We create jobs and affordable housing, stability, improving these neighborhoods. We are persons of color. We are the people of these neighborhoods. We have been proudly self-employed for the past sixteen years. We currently have seventy-eight humans living and being provided for under our care. We are desperately trying to increase business investments, sorely lagging commercial residential investments, trying to end the institutional racism by asking for a hand, not a handout, but for the basis of any business, funding and support from the city of Sacramento. Our mission is to create vibrant, healthy, opportunity-rich neighborhoods fueled by the indigenous persons, as well as anyone seeking to be a part of the diversity and inclusion and growth that is us Blessings Care. We've identified quite a few buildings that are currently vacant and can be rehabbed and renovated, and just made wonderful homes for a normal, a number of people. We have one site, Councilman Warren, in your district.
Ms. Stewart, your time is complete. Will you make your...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, again, with the Measure U portal is open to submit any idea or application for, for funding. Councilman Hanson?
Yeah, just want to follow up on one thing, Mayor. Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on two things. One, I just want to say, board and care facilities are actually absolutely in our mind as a type of model that would be welcome, especially related to the efficiency housing, as a way to regenerate that type of facility, which we know we've lost a lot of. But my question is for the city treasurer. You are the most important, critical person on our staff in this room right now, because you'll tell us how fast we can do this, what the timeline is. And I know that we are all wanting to have gotten this done last week, but can you just update us on what the timing looks like and how, what our expectations should be on a realistic standpoint to getting this money bonded and ready to move out the door?
Sure. We're concurrently working on appraising the properties. That's, that's what's taken the longest amount of time. We're praising a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty properties, part of the Master Lease Program, the second Master Lease Program. We're just about done the two major players in that, which would be the Convention Center and the Community Center Theater. We should have that information by the end of next week, I believe. Then we have to set up the Master Trust, so we have to deal with ORC and determine how to set up the Master Trust. And then we have to do the stress test. We're waiting for after mid-year, which will become to you guys next week, so then we can gauge finance. can gauge finance with our financial analysts, and we can go through the assumptions that the next 2021 budget's going to look at. So that's going to take probably till mid-March, early April to get the stress test done. So we're looking at, and I've said this to a couple of your colleagues, probably issuing the bonds in July to early August. That's why we've added the $6.7 million back in the budget, because we initially budget 7.5 for the first bond payment, we're using $700,000 to set up the bond, and so we're not doing it into fiscal year 2021. So we're looking at late July, early August.
So one of the questions, I mean, that timeline, because we approved the budget last year and wanted to embark on this, for some reason I thought the appraisals would be done a little bit sooner and that timeline would be tighter. Is that a conservative timeline, or is that the tight...
That's the best, I mean, that's, that's a realistic timeline, because we had to wait for the real estate folks to do an RFP to determine who the appraisers were going to be. And they didn't get the appraisal information, I mean, get the RFP information back till mid-December. So they didn't start earnestly on the appraisals till, till late December, early January.
Okay, well, I hope that we just continue to move with a sense of purpose, Mr. City Manager. That's a long time to get the appraisals going from July 1, when you had authority, until, till now, so I just don't want to see this drag out too long. There's a lot of different headwinds, but the biggest headwind we're facing is just the challenges of our, our public and our citizens trying to find housing that will be available to them. So I appreciate all your hard work, Mr. City Treasurer, and I just wanted to make sure that we went in eyes wide open on this timeline.
We'll keep, you know, I, I know that the treasurer's been terrific around all of these things, knows the pressure, as does the city manager, and we'll keep working together and pushing to see if we can, you know, responsibly move those timelines up, but we get it. The only thing, point I wanted to make that hasn't been made before is that, and you brought it to light, John, is that the council resolution from the budget last year was to not only float the housing bond, but there are two other pieces of the bond here that you're going to bring back in the spring, if you will, as part of the budget deliberation, and that is $50 million in the first tranche for neighborhood investments, capital investments. This is the commercial corridor revitalization strategy. This could be the small business assistance to neighborhood entrepreneurs trying to get started. This could be a whole variety of things, informed again by the Measure U process, the ultimate decisions made by the council, but that, so it's 50 million this year for housing, 50 million for neighborhood investments, and then $25 million for public facilities, city facilities. And then next year, we continue to steer the ship in a responsible way, we're going to seek to do it again. So that's how we get to 100 million for housing, 100 million for, for neighborhood economic development, and 50 for city facilities. So that's the, that's the program, correct?
Right, at the end of the budget process last year, you were looking at bonding up to $7.5 million annual debt service, which gets you $125 to $135 million. But again, we have to go through the whole process, the 6% mandate, which we're fine with, and the stress tests by an independent.
Yep.
Okay.
Very good. Excellent, thank you so much, John, appreciate it. I've got nothing else from the council, we need a motion and a second.
Moved and seconded.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, we're on our way. Let's go, thank you very much. Thank you again to all of the stakeholders and the advocates and the public that have been wanting, wishing, and working for this for a long time. All right, council ideas and questions?
And Mr. Mayor, I do have a board and commission appointments to reach the record. The first is to the Civil Service Board, Emmanuel Amanfor, and Robin Moore, and to the Utility Rate Advisory Commission, Rachel Ann Vanderwerf. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Council ideas and questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief announcement, some of you may have heard, a while back I brought forth a proposal for a potential women and children's transitional housing community on Northgate Boulevard. I'm going to have a community meeting tomorrow night at Rio Tierra Junior High School, starting at 6:00 PM, to roll out the proposal to the community so that we can edify them as to what we're looking at, and we would hope to see you there.
Okay, I have one, but I guess it's me. So the voters of Sacramento will decide on Measure G in March, and don't want to, I don't think this is the forum to debate the pros and cons of that particular measure, but what I would ask is that the city manager work with my office to bring back a youth funding measure for the November ballot. That, if I might describe it in its bare outline, would require that a percentage of any city surplus dollars defined by increasing revenue be put into a youth fund specifically for nonprofits, and that this come back for the potential of council consideration to place on the November ballot, regardless of how Measure G turns out. And I think that's enough specificity for now, because if it comes back, it can come back, you know, obviously with full council consideration, but I would like, since there's a lot of community expectation discussion, if it is possible to bring back this kind of measure before us in the month of February, so that we might consider it as quickly as possible. Thank you. Councilman Warren?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know, I want to just say, applaud you again for making the statement that you just made, because I think we all recognize that youth need our support, and my only hope, it's too late now, is that maybe we could have done something before, because...
Fair point.
Yeah, because I think the young people went out and did so much work, and as you know, I am supporting the Measure U...
G.
G, excuse me. Measure U...
Supported Measure U too, right?
Reluctantly, I did, yeah.
Barely, as I recall.
No, I, well, I just wanted to make sure that the funds go to the right place. But I do recognize, as we all do, that the youth need our support, and these young people went out and got a bunch of signatures and worked with community representatives, and that deserved to be heard, and so, but I'm glad that you are bringing this forward, and I look forward to seeing it, because hopefully, if it's something that hits the mark, I'd like to, you know, be a supporter.
Well, it will be different than Measure G, it may not be exactly as, it may not be as robust, but I think it would be...
Well, let's take a look and see.
It will be significant.
It's a step, and it's also the further acknowledgement that even though some of our colleagues here are not supporting it, we recognize that there's this need out there, and we're going to try to meet it. So we're still working together in some extent on it, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, in an effort not to give the city attorney a heart attack here by going too much into dialogue, I just want to say to staff that I support that too, I'd like to see it come back in February, I appreciate the mayor bringing forward an approach that allows us to take another look at this and give, give us an opportunity to support kids in a way that is, I think, more reasonable. But, but to you, city manager, I do think it's imperative that the conversation is timely and could come back as early to the council in February as possible, so I want to reiterate that request, so you hear it from more than one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One thing here for our staff, there is a proposal for, that's being passed right now in the legislature for about $50 million that could help out the Front Street Shelter. I think a couple of us have talked to staff about this, if we can move that part of our advocacy, sooner the better, that way we can take advantage of it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for that suggestion. All right, let's hear from the residents addressing the council on items not on the agenda, and then we'll adjourn.
Thank you, I have five speakers this evening. The first is Robert Copeland, and Crystal Sanchez, Anna Maria Ragland, Kevin Bolts, and then Stephanie Peria.
Well, I told you I'm going to call you out when you sidebar conversations between the city council members, because you're not listening. If we have to obey the rules, you have to obey the rules. You know why I'm supporting the Real Rent Control ballot measure, not your sham anti-rankage ordinance? Because did you know the median cost for a studio apartment is $952 in Sacramento?
Where are you going, Mr. Mayor? Are you kidding me?
Coward!
No, I'm not kidding either. And SSI gets $944. That don't add up, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. That don't add up. I mean, your plan is going to cause more homelessness, what you're trying to stop, it's not going to stop when rent's going up faster than the people's income, whether it's SSI, jobs, Social Security. We need to do something now to stop the homeless population from going up, and you're not doing it. Did you know 12% of the Sac State students have experienced homelessness and 47% are fully insecure?
You laughing?
I mean, they've got offices at Sac State addressing that issue. Get on the ball and let's see the homeless population start going down instead of going up. I mean, we have some of the fastest growing rent increase by percentage rate in the entire nation. I think that's wrong, you should do something about that. Support Real Rent Control and not the sham that you passed.
Next speaker is Crystal Sanchez. Following Crystal Sanchez is Anna Maria Ragland.
Good evening, I'm Crystal Sanchez, the president of Sacramento Chapter of the National Homeless Union. With all due respect, you're failing the people. The problem is that the impacted voices are not in these policymaking meetings, and it's all about them without them. The unhoused categorized as whole, there's no way to go, nowhere to go, they are swept every 72 hours. If you had one violent offender in your neighborhood, would you be okay with us calling you all violent offenders? Stop making policies based on statistics and not people. We had to disrupt the League of Cities homeless policy workshop for this, same reason. People are dying, we had two die yesterday. We are on the National Hall of Shame, that's not okay. There aren't resources, there aren't shelters, when was the last time any of you went into an encampment and stopped criminal, and, I'm sorry, when was the last time any of you went into an encampment? I'm sorry, guys. You guys need to stop criminalizing the unhoused, and you need to stop criminalizing us who are out there serving. We are getting citations for serving food to people who are dying. We have 21 demands across the state of California, I know we're in Sacramento, but this is the Capitol. We want a statewide, we want a statewide and local audit of all of the homeless funds, an immediate meeting with the California Homeless Task Force and our officials here. Please halt all these state-created dangers that are violating people's Eighth Amendment rights. I do, they did grab the extra one of these. We have a letter that we wrote with the 21 demands that we would like for you guys to look over. It is things that people need. Public restrooms go for everybody, not just the homeless. We need to start treating them the same as we treat everybody else. So there's that for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speakers, Anna Maria Ragland and Kevin Bolts.
I'm here to urge this council to fight poverty and not the poor. As someone who works with those in need every day, I see the city fighting against these individuals and not really reaching out to them. Who am I, Anna Maria? I run a group called Las Madrinas, the Godmothers, and we are exactly that to the people that we help. We fill in the cracks, we help the dollar stretch to the end of the month, we provide the basic necessities that these families so desperately need, and in my opinion, should be provided by their city-state government. We also provide cribs and toddler beds so that CPS doesn't split up families simply due to poverty. Many of the families are faced with the decision of buying food or diapers, paying rent, or buying formula. Some don't even get to make this decision because their rent is just too high, and they are forced to seek help in inadequate or non-existent shelters that separate families if their children are too old. Males over the age of 13 years old are separated from their families and placed with the adult male population. Wrong, not a good idea. Now to you, with the fraction of the dollars that you talk about in your press releases, we provide an array of support for numerous infant and toddler needs. The reason why we are able to do this is because we care. We simply care enough to make it happen, whereas you don't. You care more about the opinions of your donors and wealthy land developers, which is why you send the police to harass us and the unhoused instead of sitting down and actually helping us.
Our next speaker is Kevin Bolts, then Stephanie Peria.
I want to start off by recognizing Officer Patrick J. Cox and Sergeant Todd Edgerton, who I saw earlier tonight, who both murdered Darrell Richards. As I've stated before, when I moved here in July of 2015, my rent was $925 for a two-bedroom at 26 and J. Crazy, right? In September of that month, I read an article warning of a looming housing shortage and inevitable rental spike. The writing has been on the wall since 2015, and you've done nothing, nothing to help that is. You've extended the hours of parking-based extortion in conjunction with downtown development, you've green-lighted funding for MLS-related infrastructure and a climate-doomed riverfront, and managed to cancel the plans for the one recently planned shelter. The only thing more sinister than the actions of your police, who steal, abuse, and murder the unhoused in this city, rest in peace Joseph Mann, is the fact that Gavin Newsom somehow named a housing czar of California a schmuck like yourself. The forces you and Howard Command have murdered, removed during a rainstorm, and abused in other ways the unhoused in this city. You yourself passed an ordinance to remove them from living out front of this building where they had some protection, because you didn't like seeing them. I say these things to say that you have failed, to the point where I would say your most momentous achievement is in fact your failures. Cities in Canada have passed vacancy taxes on properties to fight houselessness. The city of Berlin, which I think is inarguably greater than this one, has seized and purchased buildings from private owners in order to fight housing crisis in their city. You have considered and done none of these things. Due to this inaction, I fully plan this year on activating and organizing people to siege the empty buildings in the city and house people within them. Littered around downtown are more empty spaces than I care to see, and they've been that way since I lived here. You have a physical and legal battle ahead of you, I promise you, and Darrell, tell your friend Jesse I'm coming from her school board seat. Y'all have a great fucking night.
Stephanie Perera is our final speaker this evening.
I'm also here to talk about housing issues and unhoused issues. The amount of disrespect that you continue to show our community, it just continues to astound me, I don't know how you, how you happen to just keep on disrespecting us. But you sit here and you talk about, oh, what more can we do? There's people, there's groups that are doing this work that have brought you solutions, you don't invite them into the room, you don't invite them into the table. There were people speaking about unhoused issues and housing issues right outside for an hour and a half before you started this meeting. None of you cared to attend, none of you cared to listen. You can... You can look at the demands that the Sacramento Homeless Union has for you, you can look at the freaking Supreme Court case that says if you have nowhere to put unhoused people that they can go willingly, I might add, then you cannot have the police remove them from where they are sleeping because they have nowhere else to go. You can start by making sure the police stop harassing unhoused people, stop stealing their belongings, and leaving them to die in the cold. Open warming shelters. You don't have to wait three days to do it. Open cooling shelters in the summer. People are dying out here, and you all are sitting around saying, what, oh, what have we not done? Pretty much everything under the sun. Get to work. There's plenty to do if you just listen to us. We're here, and we're willing to tell you what folks need. The problem is you're not listening. That's why this stuff continues to happen.
All right. That's the public testimony and the council agenda items for tonight. If there's anything more to come, but for the city council, where's your...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just because we recently located the unfortunate passing of Anthony, of Alex Holden, I just wanted to see if we could adjourn in his memory. He was a young man who
Yeah, that's great.
disappeared on New Year's Eve night. We searched for weeks and weeks trying to find him. His family finally has some peace, and I just
Of course.
want to ask us to adjourn in his memory, Alex Holden.
Of course. Thank you very much. Where are you turning?